I made an order. I best, uh, Mr. Dave, if you would, uh, lead us in a prayer.
Join me in prayer. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your goodness, your grace, your mercy. We thank you for your son who died on the cross for all of our sins. Father, we thank you for this county, for each one of the commissioners and each one of the residents. Now, Father, we pray that everything that we say and do today will be pleasing to you. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. The Saint Lord. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I want to do a roll call first. Uh, Mr. Burris.
Present.
Mr. Pope.
Present.
Mr. Tanner.
Present.
Mr. Bernard, through. Uh, Chair here. Uh. We have a guest speaker for items. It's not on the agenda. What we want to do is on the airport and, uh, I believe we have Mr. George Vogel and Mr. Trent Cady. And, uh, they would come up and tell us about it.
Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to come before you to, uh, discuss this matter with you. I'm George Vogel and I live at five two one five Kingsfield Drive in Waycross. I've been, I've lived there for about the last 12 years. Uh, Mr. Trent Cady's gonna be, uh, I'm actually working with Trent on this and Mr. Jimmy Bennett, uh, he was gonna be here also, but he, he flies for commercially and he had a trip and fact is, uh, Trent was supposed to be gone today and he managed to get back in time to, uh, attend this meeting. He just got back from Boston about an hour ago. So he made a special effort to be here to address you. Uh, little bit about myself. Um, out of college at Georgia Southern, I went into Navy's, uh, weapons and, uh, officer on P three, which is long range reconnaissance aircraft. I flew the world, basically doing surveillance on places like Russia and China and, uh, other odds and ends around the world for about 20 years. And I retired from the Navy, uh, doing reserves out of, uh, Jackson Fields, uh, and came to work for Georgia Power and Southern Company as a project manager for them and communications and, uh, electronics. And then retired from all that, moved to this area and bought a blueberry farm for my wife and a packing plant. We grew blueberries for the last 10 years. I am a pilot at the, uh, airport and I'm going to address what the airport means to this area. I've given you each a, a copy of, uh, my presentation so you can follow along if you will. Um, your airport is strategically located in the airways coming out of Florida and going into Florida. Uh, all the air traffic comes through this area and they have the opportunity to stop here for fuel, services, to eat. Fuel is much more expensive in Florida, so it, it, it's a great place to come and, and land. You have three runways here. Very few run, very few airports in Georgia or Florida have three runways. And that's a huge advantage because if you've got heavy winds, we want to land into the wind. We don't want crosswinds. So that third, those three runways really give us some advantage with this airport over other airports in the area. Uh, I can't think of one anywhere nearby that has three runways, uh, outside of Atlanta. Uh, you also have fire protection at your airport. Right there at the airport EMS, that's a big plus for you. Those are pluses for your airport. You've got six thousand foot runways, which means you, you can take high speed jets. Not every runway around here has a six thousand foot runway. Your airport is an economic engine. It draws business into your area. If you embrace that business, hug those people, sometimes dollar bills fall out of their pockets and they can stay here in richer neighborhoods. In many cases, your airport i- is the first and maybe the last, uh, opportunity for a person coming in here to, uh, basically, uh, take part in your community, to see your community, to, to either like or dislike what they see. When they land here for fuel or may take a break, uh, not all airplanes have bathrooms. They come and use your facilities and, and you may impress them. Now, all it takes is that one person, one person that you really impress, who's head of, uh, who knows, uh, some big corporation. Uh, could be IBM, it could be, uh, Amazon, you don't know. All it takes is that one person that you have to impress. Next thing you know, you got fifty million dollar business. When the corporations travel, when the wealthy travel, they usually travel by air. They, they do their business and, and get back where they came from. And when they come in here, uh, we just have to be there and, and provide them the services they need to be able to, uh, do their business and help us. Um, I made a list further on in here, you're gonna see that list, of about, uh, five companies I put down that, where they come in here and they, uh, do business with us at the airport. Trent Caden right next to me here. Trent corrected me. He says, there's like twenty-five or thirty companies that come in here and do business with us. Why I land at Waycross? Why would they come to Waycross to start with? You've got great hours. You've got services seven days a week. You have fuel trucks which can do pressure fueling their large airplanes. Some of the commercial aircraft that, uh, these guys fly, uh, they, uh, like, uh, Phenon that Trent flies, the, uh, some of the Gulfstreams made in Savannah that come in here, they do pressure fueling and they need those trucks to fuel them and, uh, big planes like that, especially wealthy people that bring them in here. Some of those planes like a G six, that's a sixty-five million dollar plane. They don't fuel their own planes, folks. They're not gonna go out there and take a gas line and pump fuel in their plane. They expect you to fuel it. So if you want to lose that kind of business, uh, put self-service pumps in. Okay. One thing you may not be aware of, small planes, a lot of them are, uh, they have fuel-injected engines. When that fuel gets hot, when we're flying, we land and shut down, that fuel vaporizes in those lines. Sometimes they're very hard to restart. So you pull up to a fuel pump and you're gonna fuel it yourself and you shut that engine down, you have a real possibility, you're not gonna restart that engine for an hour till that plane cools down. That's a big advantage. When somebody brings a truck out to you, fuels your plane, you don't have to worry about it being next to a fuel line or fuel lanes and shut, shutting the plane down, blocking, uh, other planes from getting fuel. And that's a real possibility. I've had that happen before on mine. Your airport, you've got nice restrooms, you've got rental cars, all these things being available on weekends. And some of these people, they come in on weekends, they want rental cars, they want air, uh, restrooms. Uh, we had this, uh, movie company just came in a few months ago, taking movies. They came in all nights, weekends, any time of day. I think they took on about ten, uh, if I remember, about two thousand five hundred gallons of fuel, if I remember right. But, uh, why'd they come in? Because they got service, that's why. Just as an example, Fuel South, Clayton Homes, FedEx, Ohio Mulch, State of Georgia, Red Star Air Force, all these people, plus about twenty others, come in here for fuel. Now, Ohio Mulch, Mulch, they actually take their execs over to Homerville, drop them off, and they come back in here. Pilots do. They don't stay there. They come back over here, get fuel, then when the execs are ready, they go back in there, pick them up. They don't stay there. So where's our money come from? We get federal grants. Every plane that lands here, airport takes, takes account on it. We make money on it. Airport gets grants on that money. Fuel sales, taxes, hangar rentals, intrinsic value. What is intrinsic value? How do you account the value of present, future business brought into this airport? When they bring, when, uh, there are top ten things that bring a business to an airport, one of them, I'm sorry, to a community. One of the top ten things that bring a business to a community is, what kind of airport do they have? They want to know that. What's the situation on the airport? So you have the opportunity to impress them every time somebody comes in here, because they're gonna be looking at that. Um, so let's just say a business brings, uh, I mean, airport, uh, your airport brings a business in. And let's say they build a plant here. And let's say that plant gives you three or four million dollars a year in taxes perhaps. Well, after that initial, uh, run-up, you don't get the credit to the airport that that reason they brought that business here is because you had an airport. So forever, that airport is making you money because they brought that business here. All right. Just for your knowledge, we, I put a, uh, a DOT, uh, Department of Transportation for Georgia, analysis of your airport and what it does for you. When you get a chance, you can look that over, but you'll see that the airport has a, uh, annual economic impact to this area by the, according to State of Georgia, of six billion, six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. That's how much money is, the airport affects in your area, over six and a half million dollars. Another situation is, you've got competition out there. And the competition is ready to take your business. Take a look at, uh, Baxley over there. I put some pictures in the back, what Baxley's doing. You'll see the pictures of your FBO, which is Fleet Based Operations, that's your, it's your airport. And next page, you're gonna see what Baxley's built. Next page, you'll see what our interior, our airport looks like, and you'll see what Baxley's looks like. There's one more thing about Baxley. They put living quarters upstairs for visiting pilots to get a room. Call ahead, we'll reserve a room for you at our airport. They're trying to take your business.
In summary. The issue here is, is that we want to keep this full service or do away with it. I think that's probably the issue.
Yes, sir, it is.
And y'all want to keep the full service, I know.
Absolutely. Because what happens is, you get rid of your full service, you become like every other little airport around here. And that's why they're building fancy facilities. They're building fancy facilities. So you, you kill you off your fuel services and your full services and your hours, your business is gone. They'll take it, because they're already starting to broadcast, you know, on the news networks that we get, that we read as pilots. They're already starting to, to, to invite us. We have the, uh, Red Star Air Force that comes in here. The Red Star Air Force comes in here twice or sometimes twice a year. They got, they bring in twenty-five or thirty planes, spend about a week here, spend a lot of money, go to hotels, rental cars, the whole nine yards. They've already told us, hey, Flor- we got two airports in Florida, it's right in that, in Florida right now. They're courting us, want us to come there. They're trying to get their business. And what did they do? What did they do? They told us, they said, you drop these services, we're gone. Yeah. And, uh, so that's just the beginning. Your, your G fives are big places, planes like that, you drop full services, they're gone. Uh, I had a plane, I was just over at the airport Sunday, I was just messing around, trying to prepare for this meeting. And there was a, there's a plane out there, it's called a caravan. It's actually a work plane, so Cessna caravan, high wing, high wing work plane. And the guy was getting into it. And I knew he'd been flying out of here a couple of days. I knew he was working. I said, what are you doing? What's going on? He says, well, I'm a, I'm a top, doing photography runs, we're photography, we're photographing the area, and we sell this information to Google and such, or whatever else he does. We come in here two or three times a week, year. And, uh, and, uh, by the way, this is a high wing airplane. It's like, our guys have to take an eight-foot ladder to fueling, get on an eight-foot ladder to fueling. And this guy is as old as I am, that's flying the plane, and, uh, he's not gonna get on an eight-foot ladder trying to fuel his plane. You know, he won't do that. But I said, well, what, you know, I said, that's great. What made you come in here? He says, you got great hours. We work seven days a week. You got fuel, you fueled my plane, you got everything I need, you got good facilities. I says, well, if you notice on the door, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna cut back on this. We're not gonna, we're not gonna, um, but we may not, may go to self-service, we may cut back our hours, we may not be on the weekends. He says, we work seven days a week. You do that, we're gone. So this is the kind of, this is, that was Friday. I just happened, happened to ask one guy. Then these other entities come in and tell me the same thing, this one after another, says, we're gone. These guys are gonna treat us better. Baxley's just waiting there, phoning at the mouth. They'll come in, they'll come after your business. Trent, you want to summarize all this for me?
Thank you for your time, Commissioners. Trent Cady, twenty-five oh-two Hampton Circle, Waycross, Georgia. I'll make it easy. Most of I've talked to y'all. Some of y'all pissed you off over time, but I do work for three companies, Prom South Bank, Walker Jones, and the Jones Company. I've worked for them for almost thirty years, flying for them, even when I had my own striping company. Um, the problem is, and the main reason I'm, I'm here is because I'm, I'm representing the corporate side. Mr. Vogel was representing the general side, like yourself, if you're on the airplane. I'm representing the, the corporate side. And the main thing about the fuel is, just like you've got in your car to come here today, you may have fueled it up on the weekend to get here. Um, my people don't fly airlines. They, they have their own ten million dollar airplane. They can go when, when and where they want to at any time. Um, I've made a point over the past twenty-five years to support the airport, buy as much fuel as I can from the airport, even if I go and come, buy, if I don't have to buy the minimum away from home, I, I buy it here. My concern is, if, uh, the county goes to Monday through Friday from eight to four-thirty as they proposed, um, I, I won't have to put in my own fuel fund for the Jones Company, you know, and I'll, and it won't be any revenue from me coming from the, going to the county. And I, and I consider, um, that a plus for me. I don't, I've never fueled my airplane in twenty-five years as a corporate pilot, never. I always, I've pulled, pulled into these FBOs just like Waycross. I tell them how much fuel I want, they fuel the airplane, I walk away from it, I give them a credit card and go on. You won't find another corporate pilot do it. If they come in here and they have to fuel their own, their own airplane from a self-service, that's the last time you'll see them, you know. No big deal. Now, getting along to the budget, I know, I don't know where the funds come. Like I said, I don't know the structure of the, uh, of the county. I don't know where it comes on the budget when it comes to the airport, because I know a lot of it's based on, well, are we making money or not? If it's just coming from fuel sales, it may not be making money. But personally, I know I, I had to sign off to authorize a check to Roger Collins to pay for the property taxes on the airplane, and it went directly to Ware County. Didn't go to the airport, went to Ware County, into the general fund, was eighty thousand dollars, just one airplane. I know a lot of airplanes are small and old, but there's twenty-four hangars out there that their money probably goes into the general fund instead of going into the coffers of the airport fund. So if you're just looking at the fuel cells of the airport, that's fine. But if you're looking at the real number, that money bypasses going into the, to the Ware County's budget money and goes directly into Ware County's mud grader, patrol cars, fire trucks, wherever it goes. So when you're looking at the budget, look at these other twenty-four airplanes that's out here, paying at least a thousand dollars a year in property taxes. That's an additional twenty-four thousand. Um, you got twenty-four hangars that was bought instead of, and I explained this to Conrad earlier, um, back when they were giving out that one percent cigarettes, Georgia One money, our airport bought the hangars, which is generating, uh, approximately thirty-six thousand dollars a year, free money for the county that's going directly into the budget instead of going into the, I'm assuming going into the budget instead of going into the coffers of the budget of the, of the airport. So my concern is, is just, you know, we need a full-service airport. They don't go to Homerville, there's nothing there. They don't go to Luluton. If you want the airport looks like what our airport will look like, go by Luluton on the way to St. Silens. Look on the right, there's an airport runway, nothing there, you know. Our Development Authority, they gonna fly in here. They're trying to bring businesses in here. I mean, we, I've, I've, I made a quick list of thirty, thirty businesses that come in here that, that I was told, you know, by a lot of people, they don't know what goes on at the airport. They do when, when they pay their taxes, you know, from CSX to Coke to Pepsi to Eagle Distributor, Clayton Homes, Champion Homes, Zach Speaks, Cracker Barrel, which is General Mills, Olive Garden, Federal Express just built a new place at their industrial park, Simmons, the pellet plant. All these police companies got employees that benefited because the Development Authority, they flew in here to look at these places. They're paying property taxes, paying sales taxes, banking, banking at Prom South Bank, buying cars from Walker Jones, paying sales tax, putting money into the county's coffers. So look, look around at these other airports. If they don't come here, they're going to Brunswick or Valdosta. So I'll take any questions. Uh, you know, like I said, I don't know everything that's going on. I just know that, uh, there needs, everybody needs to look at the big picture when it comes to the airport.
Anybody got any questions?
Uh, I guess not so much a question, but I appreciate the gentleman coming and explaining it. And, uh, you know, I do know that the airport has been a drawing card, a catalyst for a lot of things that happen in Waycross, you know, because of the airport out there. And I'm just learning more and more about the airport out there and, uh, didn't realize how many companies and corporations use that airport. And you brought some good points about, you know, the self-service, and that's just something that was brought to this commission about that. We hadn't, it's not set in stone. But, uh, appreciate what you all shared with us today.
Drop down on Motor Drive. How many homegrown businesses already restaurant-wise? Hoggin' Bones, Cherry Jays. All of these companies started somewhere else. They didn't start in Waycross. They came in here. Dollar General constantly building, like Flash Boot did. They build left and right. Three, I mean, three within a couple of miles. Walmart comes in here. Lowe's. I mean, all of these companies that came in here, they came in here for a reason. They didn't drive in here. They flew in here, rented cars, and then, you know, how they prospect property. They came in here and build teams, same way Flash Boots did. They built a team. We landed in airport, they got, everybody went into a area and they started doing economic development. They'd sit in those cars at an intersection and count it, just like the DOT does, with these little strips across the road to see how many automobiles tra- travel through, to see whether they wanted to put a convenience store or not. We did that as Flash Boots, you know. These other companies do it too. Typically, to me, Walmart's done all the work for them, because if they put a Walmart somewhere, you're gonna see a Lowe's or Home Depot across the street. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank, thank you, Trent.
You know, and one other thing, Trent, um, if you guys have not been out to the airport, honey, some of you may have never been on a tour of the airport, let one of us know. We'll be glad to take you out there, take you to the hangars, let you see what you're, what you're, uh, paying for and, and see what's going on out there. Trent would love to show you his plane. I'd love to see it.
I understand. Okay. We, we, we was hunting some places to work on the budget. And I know this, how this come up. And I think Mr. Moy probably knows more about it, what, how the airport really operates than I do. I know, I know he knows more about it, about the financial part and what it costs and how we could, what we can do. But I don't see why we can't keep it. I'm gonna ask him if he would, let us.
And we, we will, you know, take that in consideration. I've talked to some of the commissioners already about it. And just so you know, what we were doing is, we were looking for opportunities in our budget to free up money as much as we could with the retirement of the airport manager, um, and then just recently, another employee. We were trying to figure out how we could arrange, rearrange the operations, uh, from that standpoint, because SPOSS didn't pass. So the general. So the general fund is going to take on that financial burden about, you know, what we're missing in the SPOLOST account. So we were just looking for opportunities, this may not be one, yeah, yeah, this may not be one, but, you know.
I totally understand that, but if you're looking for just their budget and whatever fuel cells is out there, just don't go from there. Take, take the fuel cells completely out, take the airport completely out and then get with, get with your Roger Collins, our tax commissioner and say, hey, how many airplanes are out there and then how many tax dollars are being generated because the airport's there? And factor that into the airport's budget, even though the money's not going into their budget, factor that in there, that, you know, it's profitable. I mean, if you, once, personally, I mean, just like the water, Ware County Water Department, when you give that utility away, money goes somewhere else, you know, we don't, you don't have time, you don't make it, you can't give it back, can't get it back, because they know the potential of it.
We're going to keep it if we can, I, I feel like, you know.
Again, my, the direction that the county's, how they do the service is what I go by, because I don't have a problem spending two-hundred thousand dollars to put my own fuel system in out there, because my people, they already give me, they said, come to the meeting if you can, find out what the direction they, the county's going, if not, put in our own fuel system, because they're not going to be inconvened.
So Mr. Moy, you're going to come back to commission with some recommendations on, there's been millions of dollars spent on an airport and that needs to continue.
Yep.
As I said, the three runways from the old World War II base is a big deal.
Sure.
But some adjustments to the hours, the salaries, the cost of fuel, all that needs to be looked at.
Yeah, the personnel issue there, we, you know, we're, we're down really two employees right now, there was only three, so we've got, we're advertising now to try to get some more help out there. And then once we nail that down, I'll get with y'all probably by the next meeting to kind of show you where we are at this point.
You feel like we can stay where we at?
Well, the only, the only thing we'd have to do is be able to cover those hours without, without it costing us so much in overtime. And that's what we were trying to keep from happening, is trying to take so much and work overtime, so that's why we were thinking about pulling away from just working, you know, from Monday to Friday. But the only way we can do that is possibly pull in a part-time person. You know, you won't have fringes on top of that, so that would be about the only way is have two full-time and maybe a part-time person out there. But they'd have to be on-site at all times.
And I would, just like, so Mr. Chairman, if I may, you know, this airport, like I say, it's been out there a long time and it has really been a beneficiary to this county. And, you know, the way to say, if it's not broke, don't fix it. So I think everything's been going fine and like you say, this is just something that was kind of brought up about the possibility of going to self-fueling and all that, but sometime, you know, even though we come up with some ideas, we have to kind of backtrack and, you know, revisit it and find out, hey, maybe that's not the best thing to do. And sometimes you can't measure it in monetary amounts as far as what the county actually generates for the money, but the benefits of it overall.
I'm a firm believer without the way we've been doing, that we are going to have a significant economic impact to our community and it's going to be opposite of what we all want. So I would love to see if we have to maybe utilize another department that's open twenty-four hours a day, one person that's out there or something, train them how to do it or whatever. We need to make sure that if we want the economy to grow in Waycross and Ware County, we've got to make sure that airport prospers.
Yes, sir.
I'm a firm believer in that.
Yeah.
And we can look and we can try to cut where we need to cut, but that's one spot out there that I don't want to see go away. In fact, I'd like to see it improve.
Yeah.
Over the next few years. And I'm sure you're the same way.
Oh, yeah.
But I just think that's very important for us down the road to start making some improvements as well as keeping it at least the way we've had it now.
Yeah, just for the record, our first go-around of trying to get SPOLOST renewed, we had money set aside in there to renovate and remodel the, the terminal building. And when it, when it went away, then that got pulled out altogether, but we had matching funds that DOT was going to help out with that. But, you know, it's, now we'll just have to go do what we can with what we have.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Seems like we're in favor of it and we're going to have to, what you think about it, Steve?
Let Scott look at all the ins and outs and see what we can do.
Do. Okay. We'll move on then and that. Ford, I know Scott would just leave it like it is.
Sure, yes, sir.
All right. We're going to go to the agenda items. We got the DOT LMEG Safety Action Plan, the striping project. We have anything on that?
Yes, sir, I can kind of give you, this is something actually new. I was called last week from DOT about them having two-hundred thousand dollars that they were giving back, I guess is probably the best way to say that, to go into a safety project. They asked us, asked me if we would be interested and I told them we were always interested. So what we've got here is a project that, where we can utilize that two-hundred thousand dollars that they're going to give us in LMEG, safety LMEG funds, and we only have to match it with ten percent, which is twenty thousand. And what you've got in your packet is a list about the fourth, let's see, it's after page three, there's two pages there of restriping of roads that DOT has provided to us that they say only qualifies because of the accident reports. So there's, there's a few on there and the amount with the project cost to do those streets amount to two-hundred and twenty thousand dollars based on an estimate. So that's what this is, is to provide DOT with the acceptance on what we're looking at restriping. Now, keep in mind, this is not the same streets that we were going to bid in phase one of that restriping project that we previously submitted. That is out on the street to be, to solicit bids, that is phase one of that other list. It doesn't include any of these. So actually, this list here gets us through phase two and phase three. So we're only really going to have to provide the money, most of the money, only for phase one. So it actually, we were actually fortunate to get this money at two-hundred thousand dollars. So we're able to get all those streets, you know, restripped and it would just leave us, I believe with phase four to do, is that right, Gene? Just phase four, okay. And five, yeah. So we get most of the, most of our biggest list done with these two projects. And we have to get it, get it signed by the chairman, so that's why it's on the agenda for it to be approved. So in the five o'clock meeting, it's, we've come to a vote to, to approve that.
There's a time limit on this, isn't there?
Yes, sir, we have to have it back. As a matter of fact, we were supposed to have it back to them last week, but I told them it would have to be approved and we have it on the agenda today. So once it's approved, I'll notify Jeremy and with DOT and he'll go ahead and start the process and we'll get it signed and I'll email it to him.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, for me.
Yeah.
So Scott, I want to make sure I understand you, so the phase two and three, these streets were in phase two and three?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay.
Most of them were, yes, sir.
Okay, so, and I think initially that be of something like five-hundred and twenty-seven thousand?
Yeah, it was around, I think it was about five-hundred and thirty-five thousand with the whole, with the complete list. And this, we were breaking it up in phases. So phase one is being advertised right now, phase two and phase three will be covered by this, which, you know, we're, we're getting two-hundred thousand or two-hundred and twenty thousand dollars for just twenty thousand dollars. So we're leveraging our money for that bid.
One other question. This won't impact us for our LMEG money down the road, will it? I mean, they're not going to deduct this from any money that we supposedly get.
It's a separate pot of money.
Okay.
So, yeah, we get, they'll need to get a bid for the other stuff too, for roads and road improvements and such.
Okay, we'll bring that up in a minute. Now, B, we've got Smith Road Paving Project, Property Condemnation. We've, where are we at on that?
Well, that's, what we have here is five parcels that will need to be condemned in order to move the project forward. I've got that list there, it was provided by our legal department. So what we would need to do is have, have that approved, because the chairman again will have to sign off on this to submit it to the clerk of court.
Okay.
So this would need to be approved by the commission to, to condemn those fourteen parcels, or parts of the parcels, I should say. And that, if you'll look on your la- I think it's, there's only two sheets in there, but the second sheet lists the parcels, the owners, the amount that's being needed, the amount being taken under the column there and the appraisal amount based on what that's, what those are worth. Very small pieces of property.
So, Chairman, would you?
Yes, sir.
Scott, so it says the condemnation, but is there the same fancy word saying that our eminent domain or?
Yes, sir, we still pay for the property and everything, we just have to move it forward and file it. And if, I'm not mistaken, once it's filed and signed off on by the judge, then that property becomes ours and then we can move forward with the project.
This got to go before the judge first, before we can do it that right.
No, well, technically, so these are all, you know, we try to communicate with these property owners and we've offered them what our appraiser has said the land is worth, they obviously don't agree. And so then now, our remedy is to go to court and file for eminent domain condemnation. Upon the preparation and actually filing of those documents, before it's actually heard at a hearing or anything of that sort, the property is unusual in the law. You know, normally if you're filing a petition or a complaint or something, you know, you've got to actually get before the judge to have a trial or jury or something of that sort to render an opinion on it. But this is an unusual area of the law and they made it this way so that the government can go ahead and move forward with these projects and not allow one or two property owners to hold up the entire project. So upon filing, it will then be the county's property, we can move forward with the project and then, you know, on the legal side, we will then fight it out with the property owners as far as, you know, what the, the cost or the amount of the property, the appraisal of property should be.
Okay, I'll forego it ahead with that on that Smith Road. Does anybody got anything, any commissioners move forward on it? Anybody?
Ready for the agenda, for me?
We have any commissioner items? County manager items, get anything?
No, sir, no, I don't, not in this meeting, no, sir.
Now here, motion adjourned.
It's on with Mr. Chair.
So I got.
You got one? Let's ask for a vote to adjourn. Mr. Burris?
Aye.
Mr. Pope?
Aye.
Mr. Tanner?
Aye.
Mr. Barner?
Aye.
Chair voted aye, that's meeting adjourned. What time does it?